Attorney and Justice Crowell.
All righty, very well, go right on to 2.0 then for the agenda approval.
I'm going.
Ooh, it's me and time for second to accept the agenda stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you care? All right, so we're going to 3.0, the visitors to address the board. And that cute one back there wants to talk to us, I'm assuming we have nothing?
No requests.
All right, so nothing for the non-agenda. Okay, so it's going to 4.0, the consent agenda.
We accept the consent agenda approved.
Good move in second to accept the consent agenda stated. All those in favor say aye. Would you care? All right, now into 5.0. 5.1, snow day and calendar review discussion.
So, went through, ran the numbers. This board, can you pull up the PowerPoint? I don't believe it's in order, I apologize. But it's the spreadsheet, this is the elementary. Ran the numbers specifically on the elementary because we took out the four additional days. I'm gonna check with our high school, middle school, I ran their numbers, I'm missing something from their numbers, so I need to check with them. I'm confident though that if they were good prior and our elementary is good, then their numbers should be good as well because we didn't take those four days away. So, if Kristi pulls that up, you'll see the...
It's up and then close, I'm so used to it.
Well, she's pulling that up, I just want to know, it's supposed to have said, my job just said that over on the right hand side.
Sure.
You just did a really mixed job, thanks.
Yeah.
Sorry to ask you.
You scroll down, 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 there it is. So, what you're looking at is a spreadsheet and Jessica's helped put it together for me. We have the times, regular day of release, you got the amount of time, the hours, the minutes, they calculate out the total hours. Conferences, the state provides us with 30 hours for conferences, that's added in. They also provide us with 30 hours of credit for professional development, that's added in. That gives us the 11:45 and 6:66 minutes. Then we go through and reduce because you can't count lunch and recess. We reduce the time for early release, lunch and recess, the regular day recess, and then at the bottom, the two snow days, which is six and a half hours, which, two times six and a half is 13. The total you see comes out to 937.75, which gives us 37.75 hours above the 900 minutes. So that's the data at the elementary level based on our calculations. So, with that, we have two days. Yes, now would be the time, let's go on to open discussion as far as what we will do with this snow day.
Yeah, we're starting to.
We did, I don't believe you got that in the calendar.
At 900, that shouldn't be like an hour minimum, no, is that what that is?
Yeah, yeah, not, yeah, 900 minimum.
One of the things, when Scott and I discussed this, that I always take into consideration at the same time, is looking at what days, if we were to add those days, it falls on. And the problem with this is going to be, is it basically falls on a Monday or a Monday, Tuesday, when also people already have planned vacations, everything else, staff usually works that other half of the day Friday that we get out early to go ahead and put their classrooms away on the weekends. It's how many kids will we actually even have show back up on Monday and Tuesday if we have the snow day? So I always still take that into consideration, even though that's more, not more important than the hours themselves, but we are still over the hours. It's not like we're, we're probably kind of short because we had a two week snowstorm or something like that. It definitely falls on Monday, Tuesday, that you're asking them all to come back, staff, kids, everything. So anyway, so it's up to you guys if you decide if you think so, otherwise. I just personally feel that we probably won't get enough, maybe even to count the days, fantastic.
Okay, I had any feedback, I just believe we are like on time. We're continually cutting days and making opportunities for us to do something else. But I'd really like to just be focused on summer school and...
And my question is, if we're looking at the budgetary things and some of the other stuff for the summer stuff, the amount of seat time we lost, the gym and seat time during COVID, and the catch-up that we're trying to do, two days is not necessarily how necessarily, but my intent and my concern is more to learn is how do we get the recuperation time in summer? And that's more my intent today. But I don't know what we're doing there, or maybe it's not part of this conversation without Michael, but it's... Right. And it's greatly scaled back because we rely on the state to fund that and they... We were told it was going to be funded and then now it's not. So, we do have a regular program that we funded at the elementary level. We have some credit recovery as a secondary level that would be as robust as we've had. We're going to partner with, partner with to try to add additional opportunities for kids. We have fantastic summer schools, plus a little bit of...
So what's our maximum amount with the union of time and dates that we can double for next year?
189 days.
Would you please? That's there.
It's 189 days, 185 days.
Because we've been at like 174?
80.
Sure, we're a student.
174.
Maybe if we just make sure that we actually wrote our calendar.
Right, and we did have conversations about wanting to do the conferences at the beginning of the year, like we did with our elementaries. We could focus that on primary or we could decide, no, we're not going to do that, we just want to get seats. So that's...
I think we miss an opportunity if we don't give it to our parents right away. Then their rights, then being checked out when the waiting is checking in.
We have talked about conferences and having that. That we can do.
Maybe there's a quicker way to do some of that, but I think it is real important, that first couple days, especially at the elementary level, is just getting them all lined up and they get what's going on. And talking about parent view and how to get that on a phone, it's gotta be one of those.
That's still an issue.
It's still an issue.
World requires availability.
Well, it could be correct, like accurate.
That's better. I do think you're focusing on seat time. Two days again, it's not like, I don't think that that's why we need a lot more. Moving forward, I want to be able to focus, I want to be able to support kids, get the seats. Yeah, it's kids that they have these needs. And Kelly's point, here's something for their conferences. Parents that are wanting to be focused on their kids are going to be focused on their kids, whether it's or not. The parents that would like to be focused don't have the ability to take them off. So finding ways to find resources before we get to that point. So that's what we can do, parents that are, leverage some of those requirements. Really start focusing on seating.
One of the things I was thinking, I forgot about it, the parent view thing reminds me, is that we, you know, our kids are actually better at a lot of this stuff than adults, right? Including me, a first student. I was thinking it would be kind of fun if we had some of our high school kids actually be at some of those to help you. There's the parent view signup tables and we have high schoolers that are over there giving them, wind up right on their phones, right as, yeah, right up, right over those first couple days and just put them to work because they can, probably even our middle schoolers take a tech thing. Those kids are good at it, and they're very, so...
Yeah, that is an opportunity we should have some more. Perhaps we should reach out to the Presser and their leadership to organize events such as that. And the middle school, and the middle school. So it's guaranteed that they will, certain ones will resolve. Yeah, I don't know who exactly the front contact for that would be, the middle school, possibly Mark Jankier or Chris Williams. But yeah, the middle school definitely.
Yeah, because I just think that if we could just get them all signed up, right? They all think it's easy, I'll go home and do this, and then they don't do it. And still have daycare parents to this day, who's like, there's no school next Wednesday? Yes, okay, so I still posted on my door to make sure that they all cut everything down and they still don't check it even, so. But getting them signed up probably took a couple months before I just might end getting going on it.
What resources, like on our social media pages especially, do we have that help advise parents on how to get the parents square on the canvas and everything like that? Do we have any promotional videos?
Everyone who should raise their hand.
Are there promotional videos that we put out on Facebook where, like our ASV page at the high school, for example, where a lot of our parents are?
So if you click on that, on your ASV page, and look at how many followers you actually have, and then you're, how many are students and how many are parents? And it's just, that's not where the majority of your parents that are already tech-challenged are seeking. I have to.
And if you go to the district website, which does provide information inside of that, it's not always, if you're a student here, it's anything that we can do. And so that's, that's part of that conversation of leveraging students who are going to be in all of this. Yes. And also leveraging a family resource and which hopefully we connect the parents into that space to become... And the reality that there is a subgroup of people that will remember adopt or adapt. And that's okay, because then you can find a way to help them. I need to...
You're a good old fashioned human.
Yeah, well, I think it's a great idea to have students, students at every conference, every time we bring parents in. And maybe students that are adult though, yeah, that's a great idea.
Anyways, that's just a thought, get them all lined up right off the bat, so. All right, anything else, anybody want to go later, that's up to you all good? Okay, we're on to 5.2, that's policy updates, second reading. Does it read all these again? All right, so your 5.2.1 is your EHB cybersecurity. 5.2.2 is the GCBF, GDBDF, KFAN, medical leave insurance. 5.2.3 is the IGBHD program exemptions. 5.2.4 is a JGE expulsion. And 5.2.5 is KL public complaints. Yeah, you have any questions, discussion, anything, any of them?
Well, I think, aren't reading them actually optional? If I remember right?
Yeah, I believe so.
And I'm not loving the program exemption itself. I feel like, in a world where parents are running more say anyways, we should be letting them have this thing and us, the district, trusting what a parent's saying and if they need an exemption or they need to be excused from something, let the parent break to excuse them.
Sick or tired of it?
Well, I'm not talking the whole class, but it's an activity. So I think that if I have to come in and say, I want you to excuse them based on their religion, like to me that feels like a violation that I shouldn't have to tell you why I'm excusing my child. I'm just asking you to excuse my child. Like I even take family vacations that I don't call and excuse my child.
So how does that, because we're there to be.
Yeah, we're doing feelings and...
Yeah, how do you, how do you expand that into some of the other policies? Because I, the way I read this is that it's state-required program running today. So that means that it's going to be, have to be a thing. And if you're not doing this thing, it's because there is some level of, I don't know if you mentioned it in the cases. If we were talking about non-state-required things...
But we already have the opt-out. So, like which program if they're actually talking about?
Right, I believe this supports the opt-out, this aligns district policy and state laws. Parents should look at this like a sick day. Like the parent, parent calls in for their student to say he's sick. They don't have to go into specifics, but because they are sick, then it is an excuse absence for that day and they are not marked down for any of their classes or anything like that. So while the parent doesn't necessarily have to go into specifics about, you know, said religion or like religious values, they should, they should be able to at least say, because of my religious beliefs or my personal beliefs.
You have 50% of your parents that, why, and say, my child doesn't feel good today?
So that's part I care less about.
Right, so...
The, what I, what I read out of this policy is, to your point, if you just call in and say, I'm sick, I'm not going to be there. Okay, fine, but if it's a state-required thing, then you're either making it up or you have to get something in accordance to that.
Same thing though, my child's not going to participate in that, okay, thanks.
I believe there's some minor adjustments to our current policy. So I think it'll be helpful to pull current policy and make any comparisons. Is there a way to define this better? That's what I'm starting to be looking at. I mean, I absolutely want people to be able to say, my kid's not good. But if it's a mandated thing, that looks a whole lot different than if it's an optional curriculum or if it's, you know, something else as far as that goes. I feel like there's a significant difference between the behaviors.
Even the mandated things you can knock out, hmm.
For specific reasons such as religious, sick, medical?
No reason given.
And when they're, well, opt-out as far as, so for instance, the, the, there's a process in place already for opt-out, right? The process wasn't necessarily followed through with, with most of the students from over the last time. So it left the building kind of scrambled to figure a process out. So that wasn't, you had the right to opt-out, it isn't a process, that's what we're, that's what I'd like to see this. Yes.
I didn't find out mine did.
That's the part about, right, because processes are in place, we want people to be able to make choices for wanting to do it in this manner so that it doesn't disrupt the building and we hover them, we hover through it. So I think that's process. Get questions, then at the next board meeting, I can bring back answers, I'll share out feedback as far as what I found, help make sure that we can define it. And then as we go through, this would be one that if you feel like, this isn't one that I like, then on the phone, you would not go to improve it. I think it probably isn't the right process. But there's two others, Kelly, that you wanted to dig into a bit, or are you more of this?
I was gonna say, I thought that we had multiple that were actually optional, like the cybersecurity is definitely optional. So unless IT won't say, I think the less policy we have, the better.
Main guy that also buy our insurance.
I was gonna say, some of these are...
In 1930, looking at it, so we have to hit feedback next time.
Sure.
OSBA and PACE are hand-in-hand and PACE is our insurer. So just being our, our model policy, it's going to conform to the agreements we need to be carried by PACE.
And then the, they, the...
A board approved that in January and we're in, we're all having to prove that we'll start in September. Unless the state decides September.
I, I just want to say, when it comes to policies for me, I can sit and read every policy and I can think perks sound good and perks don't, but I, but I also know many times it is things that have to be in place for us to get something else, whether it's even grants or it's different monies or it's even getting the protections of insurances or whatever. So for me, I just like to always know the other side of every policy is what's going to happen if we don't approve it? Or what's going to happen if we do? So thinking, you know, just for, for our district itself, it's what does it do for us?
And also, policies can always be amended and rewritten. Constitution was not written when America first started, it was heavily rewritten from the Articles of Confederation, for example. So we can just look at that as an example here. I know my analogies are terrible, but...
They're not true, yeah.
But we've done it many times too. I mean, we, the OSBA has been worn out by us, we write what they want to take out against them.
I do think that to Kelly's point, one of the most important things for that is, is proof policy, because that's what, that's the district. And so it's important to scrutinize, that's why we have re-readings and just one and done. So, you know, I appreciate the comments, that's why we do the work.
I also appreciate the focus on, it's in the unit policy. Because our policy will be this, there is no way that anyone is going to know every single policy at all, at every moment, so. Other than those that live, breathe and, you know, dream about policy.
There is a human that pretty well...
I think it is a component of, can we, or in some spaces where, just, what does it mean potato, it's absolutely need? And what are the experiences that we've had, what also might need to be optionally put in?
Right.
Otherwise, who works?
I can tell you, I really appreciate this conversation, I had a meeting earlier today with an individual who I respect, and one of their questions was, so if you as the superintendent or the board approve every single policy or edict that comes down from the state or some other governing body, then what good is the school board?
Why do we even need it?
Why, why do we have local representation? And so I think it's important that we do have that voice and question, is this what we really need or not? So, because that's, that's the job of the board, we have to do a good job of saying, hey, what about us?
Can I speak to the program exemption policy? Because you'll have your third reading next meeting and that's going to be well-attended with a lot of people, not that I mind. But I had asked Scott about, just like, especially about conserving the governor's race. Like I had asked about parent choice and like what attitude we have and he's just doing, referred to this policy and process, and I feel like this actually gives parents a lot of flexibility. And I wish more parents knew about this option because especially when you're at a high school earning credit, like having the option, providing an alternative set of coursework that achieves the intent of the state standard, like to me actually provided a pathway to like, still assure student learning and equity among the work that students are doing without, I don't know, I feel like this is actually more empowering than like a hindrance. Like if the, if the policy weren't there, in absence of that, what would that, what would that mean? It's like a parent being able to draft an alternative plan and partner with the district to like, you know, determine if that meets the core learning standard or the essential standard. I thought that, I wish more parents knew about it because I feel a lack of knowing about this option. Like, it'll, maybe might make some people feel like they don't have any other recourse.
From my experience, people will say, I'm going to opt-out. And this has been true for, throughout my career, that my child is not going to do this, fine. Now let's work to create what they are going to do. Well, really what they wanted to do is nothing. And so then when we came up with the alternative thing and then they were, we said, we had to agree on a standard and then the child often struggled with the standard that was set because they didn't really want to do it. They would have rather just been in the class. So, I, I've seen plenty of that, but I think when people opt-out and they're saying, I want to do this, then they can be involved in, okay, this is the standard that needs to be met, how are we going to do that? If you're going to opt your child out and you know that what we're doing is wrong and what you believe is right, help us, help us, because our teacher might not even be trained in what you believe. But let's get this up to a reasonable standard that we can make an assessment and be fair. So, I think it does take more meantime. I know teachers don't like that meantime necessarily, they want to be off doing what they need to do. But, but I found that working with the family often, it got me off the hook when the kid then didn't do the work that mom wanted done. I could say, well, this is what we agreed on and this is what your child was doing. I tried to be as fair as I could, but I wasn't going to make a week assignment to take care of a full complex unit.
So as I read this, I do think, I'm almost wondering if somebody's thing, I'd love to have the perspective of somebody that is in person policy, right, doing his work, to be able to read somebody at the time to tell you what you want to do. Because as I read this, there's a phrase at the bottom that says, request must be submitted to the teacher or principal. But at the very top, requests or excuses are held, they must be right, it must include reads for the request and I propose alternative. And at times, if I'm reading this and I, I just want to do a thing, I'm sorry, can I switch over to... And I would rather simplify it. I think right now there's a fairly robust conversation going on in Salem about feeding levels and the way that things are being presented and I don't know where this sits on that. And I don't think that I've seen analyses on where the writing level is.
Sure, and that's like no refers to the 504, so this is all the more reason for an IEP for every single child. And, and they have many teachers that are accommodating in it anyway, just like those stated, so...
Well, today there are alternate curriculums available that the parents can see, well, this is what we believe in. So there's, there's things that are available today that were not 25 years ago anymore. So, there are...
Part of the problem is, I believe these policies aren't necessarily written for our community to read. They're written for...
People defend.
Judges and lawyers that defend, so, you know, what we need to do then is have these written in terms that we all understand in handbooks.
Well, that's true.
Right, that's, that's the...
I think the point in general though, is explaining to our admin and our teachers that you can communicate with your parents and you can make accommodations. And you also, also should be showing them and teaching them, like guiding the way of how you get an exception, not just saying you can't.
Right, well, and I guess 504s I think are, are interesting, and I've said this many times with staff, principals and teachers. 504 just codifies what you should be doing anyway. You should be making, a 504 is to make accommodations for our kids so they can access education. That's your job as a teacher.
Individualized, man.
And, and it's a little bit of a sad commentary that we have to have a 504 meeting for us to say, okay, this is...
The manpower and timing, go think about it.
But, but what that does do, a 504 meeting requires us all to come together and brainstorm and formalize, get some ideas from the family, get some ideas from the educator, maybe a physical therapist. So we can support the child, but really it's what we should be doing anyway.
Well, I will say too, that my very first experiences with this as a beginning teacher were from exceptionally talented students. And they went, they did spin tech and work. And they wanted to be accommodated and get out of what I was doing in the regular classroom and move ahead. And I was challenged by them. A couple of them have PhDs now and have since retired, but there, I had some really, very first year these kids had services at school. And I just worked ahead because I'm here waiting for all these guys that don't get it. Sure, so here's my, here's our textbook, here's my answer book, you work through the book. And whenever we have a test, I'll give you a day's notice. Oh, okay, looks good, fine, get 100, move on. And by Christmas, that student in chemistry had finished the chemistry book and the next year they finished the physics book by Christmas and then worked on stuff. year they finished the physics book by Christmas and then worked on stuff from that I had from Berkeley and from Oregon State and places that were more challenging for them and actually stuff from graduate level work. And that was my first year of teaching. I had a kid train me that, hey, you know, don't hold them back. And so exceptions does not have to be, my kid doesn't believe in this or my kid finds this too challenging. There can be 504s in the other direction. And, and we often forget that because we don't, we try, often don't present that. That's a lot of work. It really did take a lot of work. But I can't tell you that I've had anything more to be working in than that and still communicate to those students. There's, there's two sides to this point now. One is often, often regardless. I'll sit, I'll sit.
So Kelly, just to, to throw a question or where I'm trying to figure out this part of the extension thing, are you saying if policy were in place and it was the bottom or this person's here at the end, or is there other reasons deemed appropriate by the district? Do you rather replace that with a question?
I would totally remove this completely, the whole policy. I'm about to vote no on it. Because it's like one more thing for a teacher to say, we didn't fill out the form.
So then the question that I have is how does that parent then provide an alternative
encouraging the teacher to discuss their job? They already have the legal way to do that.
But if it's a, if it's not in some way standardized or some way to standardize and favor the process, are you saying that 10 different students in one classroom can all present 10 different assignments to say, I want to do this thing instead of that thing? And the teacher has to do all 10 of those to get trouble, whether it may be academic or necessary?
No, I think it's the culture within our school in general and the teachers. So, and they're already doing that. If, if someone needs to go sit on a momentum and wait because they're wanting to basically challenge the class, or if a child needs to do their homework study and just fill out the paperwork in paragraphs, you know, like there are things that counselors are doing already. I just feel like these accommodations are being made on many different level. But we right now hang our hat on, you didn't do this and that means acquit it. The option should be presented. We should be on the other side saying, look at all the things you can do.
So the way I see it, the reason this policy is in place is.
It's not in place.
Or is being proposed. Well, being proposed in eight, twenty nineteen. If this is turned back.
This one's.
Yeah. So I guess I need to hit the other one.
So if this, well, the way I see it, this policy is meant to be, if a parent says, hey, I do not want my student doing this, whether it be sex education or state testing or some other state required course or activity, then they have to provide the necessary information where the teacher feels comfortable accommodating them, where either they don't put them in the exact same situation or, or some other reason that could be deemed either just negative if not more so. I think that is the reason why this policy is written as it is and why it's asking for religious reasons or, or.
Part of the reason why also that I did ask for documentation, if it's also to protect the district, if a parent says that my child opted out and district says, well, that's not what we heard, having it in writing, both texts in the school district and the parents with pre-documentation that obviously said that wrong, you know.
All right, thank you.
This is the.
So we didn't even have it in writing.
Yeah. I'm totally fine with that.
So I like the writing frankly. I, I, I hear what you're saying that to parent, you know, the culture, if the parents have to do another writing thing, but if you're going to tell me that this is not something that works for you, that's fine. I need to know what will. So I need to be able, if I were an educator or doing the work I do, I need somebody to tell me if this isn't what is functional and providing the parameters that we need.
You have parents there.
This requires more reaction.
The other thing though is that your OAR references have changed. So I think understanding what is in the updated OAR, it's now a requirement.
Who did change?
Is important would be, so I just, but how the first version came from OSBA about? Sometimes it's like highlighted in the color because they added it and there's a reference why. If the starting OAR is different.
Sixteen numbers of it.
Every single one.
And it wasn't worth it.
Thank you, Triski.
Yes, I did that. Then we can get to the vote components when we get there. My position is I would rather have more information to be able to make decisions. Core information that can be looked at, reviewed on paper, understanding what we made as clarifications can be done. And that's part of that reaching in. So if you think that the culture needs to change, it's a different conversation that the writing is functional as parents say, I want to do this and I want my students to do this, I want them to do this, which in my opinion is functionally equivalent. So then you can say, great, we can handle that.
I've seen some functionally equivalencies from parents that weren't functionally equivalent.
Oh, oh, nine.
Well, this is one of it.
This is what they put out. I'm really starting from requirements to OAR by maybe one or two, one oh, oh, nine. That's the shuffle you see. We'll compare the prior.
Would you like to entertain a rewrite edition?
I can tell you, yes, in the middle, being in the middle, that I don't think that it should be a project where the parent got to meet X, Y, and Z, or you can't walk a graduation. You know, like.
But at the same time, I feel it should because at the end of the day, the parents or the legal guardians are legally liable for the students and their well-being throughout the entirety of their school careers, whether that be elementary school, middle school or high school. So I feel as a, if you are a parent, you are a property owner, you are a legal citizen here in the U.S. and your child is a student in the school district, then you should at least be required to meet the teacher halfway if you choose to opt your kid out of something.
We have camps that aren't property owners and they're living in a car or in a building. There's no reason that they need to fill out a piece of paper and do this. Like the exception should be there regardless of these people.
So from an equity standpoint, are you suggesting?
From a justice thing.
That we should provide justice, a formalized system with a reasonable alternative. I think the formalized system is important, much more important than this. Although, to be fair, I, and I've worked with a significant houseless population and a single one of them doesn't have a phone. So they all have access to email, which is inviting. But to that point.
That's because they're already in a system. They're already receiving some sort of support.
And that's a welcome, our parents even provide some of those things. But I, I'm not opposed to rewrite where we can get both of these things. Because I think that that's beneficial.
Rules required from the policy. We're going to run the non-dated aloud.
Not a deadline in this particular, especially at the end of the school year. So can't we just baby pull this for right now off of the next one as far as the gender approval and we put another time period that we can?
We can especially because we'll be the theonics.
Yeah, you could.
But next meeting is so big.
For additional discussion and whatnot and all, we can, but we just don't have to pass this one. We can say, right?
Yeah, there's, there's lots of options. And actually, I think probably the right option is to as a board vote on it, say no, and then go back and bring a rewrite and start through that process again.
Or yes, whichever.
Or yes, yeah.
So OAR is the rule.
Yeah.
The district has to.
Yeah, we have to call some of these.
Right. You already have to fill out the nondiscriminatory law already.
I noticed they didn't say this is a nice idea, they simply highly recommend.
But the one thing that we need, we and I will look into is we also know our complaint policy or harassment. It's supposed to be in writing, but if somebody makes a report, we have to consider that similar to being in writing. So is that, is that the same with this? Me, I don't know. So that's what we have to go down to, the legalness.
From my perspective, the verbal opt out is one component. And I always do it to, it's the replacement that is what my focus is.
Really nice to all students.
It might even be through a, a child who's translating for their parents. It should be a verbal or it should just be an express wish.
I agree with Kelly that in terms of like a justice and equity standpoint, there needs to be a better system. However, I do also agree with Mr. Monahan here and as a current high school student who, whose school benefits from things like state testing, there does need to be a better system, a system in place for alternatives if that child or the parents of that child choose to opt out. Should we move on?
Yes.
Well, I'm still believing that I believe we should just delay that one and not have it even on there because we have so many things at next meeting. We don't need to get into this one or have people even upset we're looking like we're skipping it because we're not. We just need more time to work on it. So I'd like to put it to the next, maybe the next work session again and we can work on it that time.
And bring back some.
Yeah, bring back some different ideas and Kelly, if you come up with friends, friends and Trinity and anybody else, bring it and we can take another night after graduation. Our, I guess it would be, is it right before graduation? Probably is the Wednesday before, isn't it?
It's getting in there.
Yeah. Okay, it might be a little crazy. We'll talk about that.
On the other side, we might open ourselves up to a couple hundred parents that are like, I want this exception immediately.
It's, it's a strange situation, the exception thing, particularly when it comes to state assessments. And I understand that there's some folks who feel that's important because of anxiety and other issues. I, I respect that. But the state, and this comes from the federal government too, there's requirements that we test a certain number of kids to meet grant requirements. And so our state has said, yes, anyone can opt out. Here's the law. But then those, us as a school district, you've had too many children opt out. You better do something about that.
Or you give up access to title funding, PEA, student nutrition.
It's, it's a frustrating piece. This is how it is. But I, I would argue that doesn't mean we need to do it because we need to have our own decisions.
Well, I am looking, the work session is June 14th, so it's after graduation. It might be a more relaxing evening for all of us to be able to take a little bit of extra time to work on this one that night. If that'd be okay with everybody. But if everybody's okay with the other four, we could go ahead and put on our next working agenda, be able to just be approved on those four. Everybody okay on that? All right. So anything else? Anybody on any of the other policies? All right. And we will go on to 5.3, the St. Collins School District, 502 Business Report. Turn that over to Jessica.
Yes. I just have one item, I think we might be calling it an MO. Special thank you to Chrissy for accommodating last minute additions to the agenda. I was on a training on Friday and sent it last week. It was just off my, off my normal routine. So once, twice, three times, and each VAC are a few that we're bringing to you. This will be the third and final one for our elementary school in Columbia City. We did out earlier in the year and, yeah, they wanted to say the initial bid from that round were about two, five times more than we anticipated and had resources for. So we reviewed, revised scope and went out for bid again. We offered walkthroughs to, or all of these bid proposals and had one, one responder of which was deemed responsive and responsible. So that bid was for $1,170,000. That does exceed the amount we have available in ESER to support that. So this will be a graded funded, graded funding project with our capital improvement fund, which is mostly supported by a transfer from the general fund. There'd be here at all those construction excise acts receipts. So that at least is where we are and we're just seeking approval from the board to award that contract. And that concludes my report. Most are any questions?
And how important HTR is to that school. And it has been a challenge to get that in there. Just with escalation. Is this system wide, HTR, or is because they now require additional air scrubbing technology? Or what, what caused the cost increase?
Supply chain issues and.
So it wasn't a higher standard of parts or anything, it was just.
Work force, supply chain.
Whatever.
Same thing.
Reasons. All right. Well, then we will go on to 5.4, Superintendent Report.
Yeah, I wanted to share, start and end time for schools. Because if you could pull that up, we, we've worked with consultants to help look at best ways to make bus, bussing efficient, so saving money and bussing. And part of that has to do with the start and end times. As you know, our elementary teachers have requested support and possible ways to come up with some additional plan time for beginning or end of the day. So we've spent quite a bit of time, we've had a committee meet twice now. We've developed some time, we've landed on some times and we thought that we had consensus. And then afterwards, there was, you know, there was parting a lot of discussions and it sounded like people had second thoughts. So I'm putting these in front of you to get some of your feedback. And then my challenge is finding time before the end of the year to get my team back together and say, here's some thoughts and ideas. This is what we currently have. The challenges for us is that they're so close together that getting kids out of school from the middle school has been a real challenge. You can see there's 20 minutes between the elementary and the middle school and that creates an issue where we've got middle school staff supervising middle school kids sometimes at four o'clock. And then the closeness between the start time of elementary and middle school creates a situation where it's a big challenge for kids, for families who have children that are elementary and middle that drop off at elementary and then run over here to the middle school and drop off. Part of the solution, continue to encourage families, use the buses that we're providing and then we wouldn't have as many people in line who pick up the problem. This is what we currently have. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is proposal number one. The challenge with proposal number one is that based on the times, it would effectively double the fleet of buses. So unless the middle of high school dismissals could be separated by 45 minutes and states it down there, clearly that's not an option that we would be interested in. And if you go to the next one, I've highlighted this and down there at the bottom is what the committee recommended. We have some, some concerns with elementary starting too early, especially if there is any change in daylight savings going to permanent daylight. especially if there is any change in daylight savings, going to permanent daylight savings. It could be pitch dark at eight o'clock or when we're picking up children. We've had some feedback from the high school that, yes, that's an early start time. But we have kids, because they get out at two thirty, two forty-five, are able to get jobs. And so that's a benefit. There's always research out there that says, start your high school, secondary folks are children later because that's more beneficial. So there's some districts that are doing that. I guess you could look and say, well, we're doing that with our middle school kids who are our early adolescents. The challenge that we have, the high school level is the amount of sports activities in the afternoon. I know we get pushback from folks saying, well, then athletics shouldn't wag the dog. I guess, I'm not sure if the benefit of missing class time for athletics outweighs getting kids up early in the morning. So there's, there's all sorts of discussion. You can see what was recommended, these times are far enough apart that we can get buses, not increase our bus, bussing, that we, our current bussing fleet, but also have enough time to get kids from the high school to the elementary to the middle school without clutching them up. The initial proposal from our consulting team that we were working with was the high school eight to three, elementary fifteen to two thirty, and then middle school from nine fifteen to nine, to three forty-five. In our meeting, particularly the middle school was feeling like, gosh, three forty-five is awful late. So they said, can we back everything back fifteen minutes? And so we backed everything back fifteen minutes, and that's the blue that you see there. This is what the team said, yep, that'll work for us, seven forty-five to two forty-five, elementary eight to two fifteen, and middle nine to three thirty. Again, after the meeting, there's conversations, gosh, we're not really sure. So I need to bring folks back in and say, hey, what, what is it that we're trying to get at? Does this need to move? I feel comfortable that we could move those times up and down, but I'm not too eager to change. Exactly, the relationship, because we absolutely need to have buses arriving at the middle school and kids getting on the bus within five to ten minutes instead of waiting thirty to forty-five minutes. It's not fair to the middle school kids and we're sending them up.
You're bringing up some staff planning time. You know, I'm standing out here monitoring kids for twenty minutes instead of working in my classroom and I have work to do. So I get that part. The only thing that I've heard is that there are some programs, in particular things like jazz band, that would love to be able to meet still in the morning, but when you go to the seven forty-five, then they have to start being there at six thirty in order to do jazz band and, and that's brutal on those folks.
It's seven forty-five right now, that's a little late.
Yeah, and that's, that's why, that's why. Am I jazz band or graduating, but I, I have heard this from, and, and of course from the instructor. You know, there's certain individual spots that are there. There's other solutions for that, but anyway, that's the one that was brought up. Early morning classes are way early when they're, so seven fifteen used to be early morning when the high school, when I was a little boy, that school started at eight fifteen or eight twenty. And seven fifteen was the early morning class. And now it's moved up to six o'clock, you know, get there and it's pretty, pretty early for high school kids.
And that doesn't change for the block schedule or not?
And, well, I don't think it starts yet.
Even when, even when I was a freshman, the high school still started at eight fifteen. And early morning classes like the zero period fitness started at seven fifty. And there were no buses. And me as a freshman, I obviously didn't have my license yet, so I had to rely on my mom or my dad to drive me. And I think, I think that is a genuine concern for a lot of our younger students, a lot of our younger high school students and even middle school, I don't know if the middle school does an easier period or not. But our high, younger high school students especially, who rely on parents going to work. We don't want it to be too late, too late, or too early in the morning.
Or too.
Or too late, yeah.
Oh, I have to maybe.
My question on this, from a middle standpoint, there is one set of group, one, one set of kids in here that is essentially autonomous and can get up and can get ready and can do the things that they need to do. There's another group that needs some kind of encouragement, but they're getting closer to that. Then there's a third group that has no idea what to wear and doesn't know where the snacks are and needs to have all of this stuff put together. And yet, from a working standpoint, the two groups that need the most help start later.
Yeah.
So I see it backwards.
Well, middle school starting later probably is not a bad idea, because those older students need their sleep and they just stay up too late.
I just. Parents helping them get ready and parents helping the elementary students get ready. And then having to go to four, we are, that are counting. That's where the vast majority of workers are going to be going. Our parents need to be able to take care of their kids, get them on a bus and get going. And that will increase their ability, it's going to increase their ability to find jobs that fit non-traditional schedules.
So in this scenario, to that point, your elementary students are riding the bus with high schoolers in the morning. So they are accessing those same buses early, that's like a sell for everyone, but like they are on those early buses being picked up up here. You have a high schooler and the fourth grader, they're getting picked up on the same bus. Now statistically, high school riders are light, but especially lighter in the afternoon. They're going to jobs, or going to friends' homes, or staying late. Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. I felt like I was trying to sell you and then.
Well, also, middle schoolers in elementary schools is not nearly as compatible with high schoolers in elementary schools. Because you separate those apart, there's enough of a age difference and that it's somewhat tolerable. But I wouldn't, that's, that's not, I don't mind the only, the kids riding the high school.
Just to the point, they are sitting on those sort of your buses and you're.
But then you got kiddos that are sitting on buses for how long that are being completely engaged and focused. I just, it, it does not make sense to me to have high schools starting at these, they never had this. Seeing as that is the students that are most likely to begin doing their preparatory life to adulthood.
This is a pretty standard schedule. I can tell you, when I left St. Helens twenty plus years ago, we were upset. Actually, Hank Killen and I lobbied the superintendent that seven forty-five start and that for our elementary kids. And we were worried about children that were standing at the bus stops. When I came back to St. Helens, I had multiple elementary teachers remind me and say, Scott, we need to change that. So we did, and, you know, I, I've heard arguments on both sides. And to be very, very frank, I just want to get those start times that works. And what works for me is one where kids get on the bus, they get off the bus in a timely manner. We don't have middle school kids waiting for forty-five minutes or forty minutes or whatever, or elementary children waiting. So I'm really happy with whatever the schedule is, but I just want to make sure that we don't have the outworks and not pretend that all this could work.
My other feeling is that we gave a group of people the job to do. And this is their effort, quite frankly, I'm not about to tell, okay, start with work, this is, thank you. And thank you for your effort, we'll try this for another year, we'll see how this works. I, I, that's just kind of the way I am about it. If you didn't want their advice and all of their hard work, then we shouldn't ask for it. We should have sat around here and decided. And so I, I think it's rude personally to start throwing my personal opinions in on their hard work when they've spent lots of time, as Scott's saying, charging and.
If you'll be at my house at seven thirty in the morning, I have children who need to take this.
Oh, dear, I have children.
For the workers that did this, is that a very hard job?
I showed up to one meeting and I didn't hear anyone.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it was a very hard job.
Right, I know.
I mean, like, it's a super.
Did we survey parents?
So this works for us.
That middle school time is horrific though, that's not okay at all.
Especially considering the elementary school gets out all the time.
I already have to sit in my car for twenty minutes before I can drop a job. Like, I'm already doing that, I'm already waiting, I'm already late for work every day.
Oh, so what we need to do is have morning opportunity for middle schools, for parents that do want to drop their kids off, we do may, maybe need to have morning opportunity for those. If they're, if they're not riding the bus, but our, our parent drop off kids, I know you said the school bus is great. But it does bother me a little bit too, that in fact, high school kids wander in whatever time of the night they show up. But you get elementary kids and they have to stand out there in the cold rain until X number of seconds before the door, and they go. And, and that's always bothered me a little bit, that maybe there should be some.
They're waiting in the rain right here too.
Yeah, same thing over here, yeah.
You're already waiting the twenty minutes before you can do it, but then you're waiting to begin the rain, so they're waiting.
May, maybe there's a way that we can have study hall, a gym, something, activity, something useful. Little morning class for the subriders, I don't know, but there's always possibility of maybe.
It's also the daycare factor. I have two elementary schools that get off that bus and are alone until someone shows up. So they've already made dinner for themselves before I make dinner, because nobody's home, they're all.
And that was actually the point that I was looking at, the elementary schools, the students who are the least independent out of any of those, get out the earliest, at a minimum of thirty minutes before the high school and an hour and fifteen before the middle school.
And not right at the bus, but they don't even get home till two thirty right now, or three thirty right now, but.
But for those two thirty-one, that's okay.
Or means it's far thirty. And nobody's home.
Exactly.
I'm like.
Yeah, so, parents, parents are home, older sibling is not home. If they need to be watched or if something happens, no one's home.
We get them out early to make the bend, because you can't catch them after the bus.
The one question I know that was discussed is where if we don't start the middle schoolers till that late, even though it's more hours, are our middle school teachers going to be okay with prepping prior to school? Because you know they're going to want to leave, crack away the minute school's out, or means by four.
Well, yeah, I mean, if the middle school teacher doesn't have an hour before work starts, that's fantastic.
Then no late start for them, or no early release for them.
No, that's not even in the equation.
But why, when, like, what would their.
It's very, you know, it's elementary, that is.
So in the interest of what Bill said, which was people put a lot of time and effort into this. And I have my own thoughts, but we are coming into a timeframe where we really need to solidify this for next year. My request is we figure out which one of these, and, and I would, I would trend towards the eight, the high school side. But we, we agree with this this year and the next year when you do this again. I'm sure we're going to have to do it again and see how it goes. Include parents into that conversation to at least provide some perspective about how it's going to that. Okay, that's my request.
Is the more, is it looking at increasing the bussing fleet?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would, I would just, I think this is bad.
That's like seventy thousand a bus plus the driver.
For a tired year or?
So you could be talking up for.
The bus acquisition over five years, or the four remaining years, so it's something, that'll be great.
But even if it's just another one bus, two buses, three buses, that's still a pain. Because, let me ask this, how many times have we changed the schedule since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen?
This will be the second.
Will be the second time, okay. Because the buses showing up late to the middle school has been a problem really since before I was in middle school. And then my, I had to deal with it and my sister had to deal with it. So this has been a recurring issue all throughout. And I don't know if there's even a guarantee that a change in the schedule will fix our, our lacklustered bus. So I think, I think this actually does solve that. And looking at.
That's why they're going to this trouble is to figure out.
Give them a whole hour.
Separate them a little bit so that they can.
Well, I remember my bus and my sister's bus later on would often show up to middle school an hour after school got out, like, not thirty minutes, not forty minutes, a solid hour. It would take her an hour and a half to get home when she ride, when she rode the bus. It was to, it was to the point where a lot of kids just ended up walking home because it was faster. Even when they lived across town, across the highway, it was faster than waiting for the bus. I do think that we're going to need to start tracking things because of the apartment complex. So I think that we look at this, we put a hole in it for a year, or we, we have, we do this for this year and then we start seeing just how significant the impact that's going to be, because we may need to have to shut the end.
I, I, I really appreciate the, the conversation. I appreciate the acknowledgement that the team did do work on this. I don't believe, I, I think that the team would value your input. So if, looking at this, you sees you have a different model that fits the ratio, then.
Does it have to be that time different? Like, you really need that much time in between the pickup?
That's why the kids are waiting an hour for the bus, yeah.
I would totally switch the elementary and the middle then and leave the high school at eight.
How do the elementary go the bus?
Honest to God, my elementary are going out by themselves because I'm still working on getting my high schooler out of bed. They're standing out there by themselves and I peek out the window and then they're gone and I hope that they actually go on the bus.
Sure, but I'm saying, I think elementary school gets on the bus.
Well, that's, that is.
And then I have to be late to the car and sit in the car down there.
The bus is where I'm coming from. If elementary goes last, who's getting them to that spot? It's either going to be the childcare, it's going to get dropped off, I increase childcare on Monday, although it could change, it may not matter because of the shift there. I just worry about them getting to the actual.
They're, they're more, they're, you have your parents that are riding the bus and then you have your parents that are driving. And so your parents can drop off and head to work. And then you have the others that will appreciate that they can actually get them out there to catch the bus and then go take care of their business and then take off short.
Does that mean that you now mix the middle school, high school on the same bus? Is that where that crossover would happen?
There is a contour where two grade levels have to ride together.
Oh, god, the high school. Off of that conversation.
So he, I want to, we need to move this forward. How about I will meet with my folk, my team together, I think I've got, I've heard pretty good feedback. I'll share that feedback with them, then I'll see if they decide that they want to make any adjustments or changes. I'll bring it back to you and then we can go.
Elementary, middle, high is how I would do it personally.
To be honest, I.
Elementary first and the middle school and the high school.
Yeah.
Do you know if they did consider what the H VAC packs, our roads are going to look like when those apartments unfold?
I don't think it's going to make that much difference because all those people have that much.
Yeah. I, my next slide, we can talk about that a little bit. Next, this. So Melody and I have been talking quite a bit about how, how we're going to move the children out of that complex for pick up and drop off. The concern is the buses aren't going to make the corners. Melody had what I thought was a pretty good idea, is putting a bus stop right there off of Gable. They weren't too eager to make that bus stop. So, so going back and forth and trying to figure out, we decided, how about this? How about we see if we can actually get buses through there, although it's not fully finished. We had Michelle take her biggest buses and they came in right here and they were able to come through, drive around and go out. They can't, they can't, they can go out that way. This is an official designated bus stop. Um, I checked with Michelle this morning and asked, does this work? Michelle is our director of, who run the bus company. I, I asked, do you have any concerns? What's our next step? She says, I have no concerns as it is, as long as I can go in where the question mark is and exit out where that purple, purple is. Um, the caveat is if people park, um, not in the designated parking areas, it won't work. However, having lived in apartment complexes for a few years myself, um, generally if you're not parked in a designated area, grumpies.
Disappears.
Grumpies is looking for business and drives through, picks it up and throws it away. So I doubt that that will be a problem if it is for very.
They're, they keep pretty fast.
So I have a concern, uh, that I ran into this morning and I don't know what their plan is in the civil development system section. Down on the bottom left corner, um, over to the left side.
Not with the circles, right?
Not with the circles, but.
Farthest.
That corner right there.
Further one. I believe that's the closest to the highway.
Yeah.
So, and I don't know if this is gonna remain this way or not, but currently there appears to be an access gate right there where students, or where I saw a, a young person leave through that access gate and then dart across the highway. And so either they need to shut that down or we need to find a way to.
Fill the branch.
Well, I don't know, an orange or whatever. It is a concern already that, I don't know what their plans are, but I am terrified of seeing them yet.
Yeah, and they're pretty open to working with us. It's just a slow process. Um, but we can certainly ask about that gate.
Alternatively, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I was just at their meeting yesterday because they go once and let, with other people doing, Matt and Shirley Brock and stuff. And they did just discuss because some kids were actually, came off of the, um, lower entrance or the red arrows going this way. They came out and went straight across Gable without stopping right until the Walmart parking lot on their scooters. There were kids in the construction zone already. So they have been meeting with, they're having the whole community meetings with the parents. And as each unit opens, they're gonna be discussing this kind of stuff with them. This can't happen or we don't even get to be here. So just to let you know.
If your kid, they have all for the topic.
I, uh, I do like the concept of having the pickup inside of the infrastructure versus the road. Cause I have nightmares of the highway getting stopped for however long it takes to shuffle a bunch of kids on or Gable getting stopped. So I do like that concept as long as it's functional.
It's after dinner, it's entertaining. The eight buses that were stacked up down here for our training, right?
And not to mention the fact that people will fly down that section of Gable Road without any contempt for any of the veterans or anyone.
And based on whether they're going to take the left.
New law was just signed yesterday. All cities in Oregon now can use photo radar.
Yes.
They don't need approval. They can adjust their speed limits. They don't have to go five miles an hour at a time. They can go to what they want for speed limits. And they can move their photo radar around by their enforcement plan so that you might find it scattered here and there. So some of the stuff that we're worried about, Gable roads feeding and Sykes roads feeding and stuff, there's a possibility that some of those are gonna be changed fairly soon. And, um, I think people will start paying attention to what they're doing a little more. And it's unfortunate you have to be able to handle it that way, but, uh, restorative justice in some cases is we restore our budget and we'll give you justice.
Now, are they gonna take the left? Or are they always gonna go?
Well, by coming out of the center one, they have no choice because there will be islands outing Gable. And so they have to go right towards the highway every left.
They'll be spinning in the train line.
Yes, and Lewis and Clark kids will have to go out to the highway and then go all the way back and curve back to go back instead of being able to hang that left and go straight back to the school area.
So there's no left turn out of the apartment?
I, I don't. Only out of the bottom one.
I, I think, I should never make a left turn. It's gonna be avoid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the.
Yeah.
And there was discussion yesterday too about trying to get the city to help to put a crosswalk in at the same time, just below the lower or right out.
Blinking lights?
Yes, with the blinking lights. So try to help the kids to get across whether through Walmart or the high school. Either way.
Yeah, it should also be twenty five.
Yeah, forty is a little pass.
Yeah. Maybe thirty, maybe we compromise to thirty.
Yesterday's meeting, there was only four people able to attend because it had to be changed to nine o'clock instead of eleven. And so that, so, yeah, so it didn't get to be dried up.
Forty cities.
I'm gonna explain because it's easier. The one, the one thing that I cannot figure out, so maybe we can find out where we can wait to think. Why did this spot here was chosen as bus spot? I don't see why. This is all seniors. This is in the pouring down rain and the mud. I don't wanna say mud, but they'll make like, it's all grass. Where this is the commons with the covered roof area in the center and the parents can actually see the kids standing here waiting.
There are covered bus stops designed for each of those spots.
They didn't have it on there.
Well, they actually gave plans to Joe.
Okay, change it. Well, anyway, I, I know a lot of parents with their kids, they cannot see their kid. Or they can see him here, here. And that's where most of your parenting needs.
So that's pretty cut for them because they aren't in yet, but they are designed and then we're modifying designs. And they're, they are covered by those.
So, so some, I think interesting facts from this right now, we've got, you know, just started to have people move in. We have seventeen students that are living there, current students. Out of those seventeen, thirty percent are new.
Oh, new, sorry.
No, thirty percent are new to the district. Um, I'm curious as to whether that trend continues because that will definitely indicate growth. In our conversation, I believe they're anticipating with four hundred. As many as four hundred students, um, or not students, children. When I say children, that's birth to twenty, right? Uh, twenty six. Twenty six, yeah.
Get more.
But student age, that would impact us. I would anticipate closer to, to two hundred, two fifty. Um, so if thirty percent of those are, are students, then that could be as many, or new. Yeah, that could be as many as sixty, seventy new students.
It's not as heavy an impact as some people were predicting when they hear the numbers of four hundred students, ah.
No, but, but interestingly, you know, they're talking about new to the area. They, I think, refer more to the county and so we may have.
People coming from others.
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say wherever a lot of those people were that were sitting waiting, if they vacate their spaces, then that creates a vacuum. So it makes it downstream.
Yeah, we have people from within the community. They're gonna move there because it's a nice place and they're.
Yeah. So. So there were no viable tenants.
And I was gonna say too, my, my daughters run some of the other apartments out here in the community. And that's the one thing that they have had is people right off the bat gave notice who were in the very first building to open from their apartments, which yes, left them open, but they have waiting lists too, but it's whether that waiting list is here or new also. And that, so it's gonna be maybe not only end up just like you're saying in that apartment, but it might be we have new ones in some of the other places.
I think the thing to also remember is back in two thousand five, six, around that time, our class sizes were three fifty, three hundred fifty per grade and were two hundred roughly on average. So we have capacity prior to all the construction we've had in the last three, four years to have three hundred fifty students per grade level. You know, it did.
Middle school, they look tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Probably just be six grade.
Back to wherever they were. Maybe four thousand students in that right grade. Well, that's what our, our membership. When we look backwards, we had up to four thousand students and you saw the census start to get down.
Yeah. It was.
That was a lot.
I told you guys though, it was a class of seventy six through eighty four and they all got married and they had kids and they all graduated from two thousand to two thousand and six. That's why the numbers were something. And then they all graduated and left and, yeah.
So let's see, two thousand six is coming up.
Yep, it's their kids are coming.
Well, yeah.
Moving up is right.
That's, that's what I have for a quarter. One more slide. There we go. Remember to vote day sixteen, twenty twenty three, that's next Tuesday. Exercise your responsibility.
And if you wanna know the count, put it in before that day. Otherwise it takes out a day.
Yeah, it hasn't for you to vote early.
Especially now because you can actually just have it postmarked that day. It can take three, four days for those classes.
Triple, that's true.
Yeah, triple. Didn't used to be that way. You had to have it there by certain, like Friday before, whatever. Don't have to anymore. Anyways, all right. Well, then we've got six point oh visitors to address the board on agenda items. And I'm assuming we just don't have, just don't.
Written by discussion.
I have.
Well, that's good.
I have a, a kind of a thing there coming up, I guess. Can we have a listening session tomorrow?
We do have a listening session tomorrow. So that needs to be brought up here and there. People listening. There, there's a listening session at that, at Bright Elementary.
What is the time again?
There's also jazz band concert that, that, and then just induction ceremony. And then a national auto society induction ceremony as well. So I think that's what's going on tomorrow night.
Um, I apologize. We do need, um, an agenda for action items.
I was wondering if we were doing that tonight or if we're doing that in the next week.
Part of my.
Agenda meeting. So I'm gonna move.
No, I'm not even doing.
There's, yes.
Yes, she was right. Actually, she was right.
Exactly. Gonna move to add.
I know, I love you guys.
We're gonna move to modify the agenda.
To modify the agenda to add.
Okay, but you can't make the motion. So what do we, somebody's got sick.
I said.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to modify the original agenda for the season. Any comments? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, got it. All right, now you can make the motion. Does anybody know what she really wanted you to say?
Well, I move that we add, um, under new business, I think we could add five point five.
Action item.
Action item. And do you specify the action item on it?
So through the award contract for the H D H B and the APAC.
Can I stop you one second? You're gonna have to say, you know, five point, five point one or you're gonna say five point six because your first one to amend was the five point five.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that could be five point, five point one.
There you go. That's all I say. I'm gonna keep Christie with us. We're, we're.
And I was thinking.
Okay. So then you worded, that's part of it.
Read your five point three or point one.
Okay, let's say it that way and you get it all good? Okay, so five point, five point one is to L C R V. Action award the contract for the HVAC improvements to be that. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
You can carry it. Are we good? We managed to that for you?
Good job, Mel.
Okay, thank you guys. All right, so now.
So we apologize in private. We accuse in public.
That's now giving us a smile.
This whole house is here to witness.
Well, I, I, we should have worked back the last time it happened.
How many watches do we have online?
So next week, yeah. So the seventeenth, we have a planning session at six. So that's still on our, we're waiting for that. And we are carrying that forward. Yes, we are carrying that forward because we need to talk about the results of the election.
And where we go from there? So are we good?
And you, I see that we don't have our budget meetings on here.
Yeah, can you bring us back up data on where we are next one?
Yeah, uh, week thirty first.
Which one is second? Yeah, well, we had a week or two.
Yes, I believe you have until next Thursday taking your questions. I can't do it myself.
And then my, at the same time, that's the one, because then that one also at the same time is optional if nobody thinks we need it, that we, right? Wasn't that.
Right, we would. That's the first meeting in which the board or the committee make a recommendation to put out the budget. If you guys have more deliberations or a lot of changes before you make a recommendation, I think we'll have a meeting that next week, which you can set up.
Would you please send out, I'm gonna shorten a little bit, says, if you have suggestions or concerns or questions, get them here, right?
Yes, I did.
You need to get, yeah, yeah. You know, you don't, you don't.
Me, maybe fifteen or something.
Okay, two, I get what you're saying.
Some more on their. Price.
Forward, not backward. You're saying you want another bingo.
Just doesn't really.
Move to the top way of ours.
Well, not, not where you can be so prepared for anything.
Appreciate it.
All right, is everybody good now?
Yeah.
All right, then we go to eight point oh and you is. I know, I'm not teasing.
Just use that, use that soundboard right there.
No, I'm not. Oh, no, I'm not. Make the motion. You can do it again.
Move, we adjour.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. I just wanted to say something to you.
So the band has.